A day of brand-new mercies, so let us cast our cares upon Him because He cares for us. As we begin to enter into this new season where the days perhaps will become cooler and the leaves will begin to change colors, we're grateful to witness and experience the joy and the beauty of God's creation. While we appreciate the changing season, we even appreciate more the grace and the mercy of God, and we just thank Him that He changes not. He is the same yesterday, today, and forever, and I'm glad about it because our access does not depend upon whether or not we have caller's ID or whether we're at home or in the office, nor does it depend upon what titles we bestow upon ourselves. So the Lord invites us to call upon Him while He is near and to seek Him while He may yet be found. So, Lord, we invite you to abide with us this day, and we ask that you would order our steps. We will acknowledge you in all our doings, both in and outside of this chamber, in Jesus' name. And before we go, Lord, we just want to say thank you for the life and the time of Ms. Crenshaw, Ms. Lisa Crenshaw. She left a void in our spirit that can only be filled by your glory. So we ask, Lord, that you would fill it now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we will hear from Michael Burdell with the District Attorney's Office, our Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson, our Chief Appraiser Clay Henley, President Ann Sykes with the Montgomery Education Foundation, and President Robert H. Traffin with the Montgomery Bicycle Club. Also, Terry Reynolds will be here if you have any ARPA-related questions. During the formal session, you will consider the 24-25 operating budget, the 2024-2025 construction programs fund budget. You'll consider a resolution regarding the Gatsby 54 Fund Balance commitments. You will consider a 3% pay plan increase for administrative and service maintenance pay plans. You will consider a resolution to obligate additional American Rescue Act funding to support improvements to the county's camera surveillance infrastructure. You will consider a grant application to a DECA for the 2024 SCIP grant for the Sheriff's Office. You will consider a contract with the Jones Group for Governmental Relation Services for the upcoming year. You will consider a scope of work and proposal from Jacob's Engineering Group for the Downtown Environmental Alliance Assessment Project. You will consider renewal of a professional services agreement with NAF Care for on-site inmate healthcare services. Consider Amendment Number One to a contract with Bonded Filter Company doing business as BFC Solutions. Consider Amendment Number One to a contract with The Bridge for the juvenile court. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
I've got, for agency, I think I still have this outstanding $500 to Joy to Life. I don't think I spent it this week. We'll see.
No, it's still there.
Okay, thank you.
Consider appropriations to education.
Yes, I have some left, I think $5,000 to grew tech, uh, hi, uh, boys and girls basketball.
Is that all?
That's it for me.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Yes, I have $1,000 to Joy to Life Walk, and, uh... There's another one. Rhonda, that I got. Did somebody use your name?
Rhonda.
Sir?
Somebody used your name.
For what?
DeShante Marsh. What was that?
Uh, um, she does the, um, the pink, uh...
Oh, here it is.
Pink Pizzazz. Pink Pizzazz. And she asked, uh...
That's a Joy to Life, right?
No, two different things.
But it's cancer, right?
It is. It's, it's, so Joy to Life has made a request, and I think several of us made commitments to Joy to Life to help them. And then Pink Pizzazz is a separate organization, and they do an event every year. And this year, it's going to be at the Activities Center, and they asked us to help them sponsor their event.
$1,000 to Pink Pizzazz. I think we've already given, we've already, you've given them money, right?
I have not given them anything yet.
I mean, before?
In the past, yes, I have. So they're, they're in the system.
All right.
Teresa and I, I gave them last year, I think was my first, or two years ago, something. Yeah, so I need to do something, too. So did any, we're on designated.
Yes.
Florence, does anybody else need to do Joy to Life? I'll do another, um, I'll do a 1,500 from designated to Joy to Life. And I'll do 1,000 to the Pink Pizzazz. Did you give them Joy to Life?
How much is that going to Joy? Rhonda, what did Joy to Life ask? What was her ask?
Their ask was, um, at least 5,000.
So where we at now?
2,500.
2,500.
Well, Florence, I'll do 1,000 to Joy to Life.
And then you're going to do something? So we're at 3,500. That still doesn't get us, we're going to start at 5,000 yet.
Joy to Life. She said you need to do 1,000.
So is that all?
1,000 for Joy to Life, for me, for designated, please.
Well, that's what I thought we might do.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and take mine 1,000 now out of designated to Joy to Life.
So that gets us to the 5,000. No, oh, I thought, yeah.
So is, are there any other appropriations from designated revenue?
I don't know, we have any joint requests either that I know of.
We'll consider travel training requests for engineering, the Revenue Commissioner, the Sheriff's Office, and tax and audit. Following the formal session, you will have a meeting of the Montgomery County Emergency Management Communications District Board. We will start with Michael Burdell.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We are seeking your approval for a VOA grant application for a deputy district attorney that will exclusively handle domestic violence cases. This is funding that our office has received for the past 20 years. Each year, that prosecutor handles hundreds of cases, helping victims of domestic violence here in Montgomery County. There's no impact on the County General Fund. The opportunity for the grant, we learned about it right after the meeting earlier this month, and the deadline to apply is October 1st. That's why we're seeking your blessing in the waived rules category.
Any objection to waiving rules?
I have no objection.
I have no objection.
No objection.
Thank you very, very much. We also are seeking your blessing on the Department of Human Resources, seeking to extend a three-year agreement with the District Attorney's Office to prosecute child support cases here in Montgomery County. Each month, our Child Support Enforcement Unit brings in about 1.4 million dollars to, uh, from non-custodial parents who are not living up to their obligation to support their, their children. We learned about this opportunity last week, and the deadline to submit the package is Thursday.
They don't give y'all much time, do they?
No, no, they don't, but I guess they knew that I've got the pleasure of working with a county commission that is so debonair and charming.
My God.
And, um...
I guess there was no obli, no objections to waiving rules?
And I'm not even saying that in linking to, uh, to the, the request.
Is there any, any objections to waiving rules?
No objection.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you all.
Philly should have took the three points.
Don't even get me started. I'm just glad that Commissioner Moore Ziegler did not have my phone number because she was going to taunt me last night. It was, uh, it was heartbreaking, heartbreaking. Dallas, is that your team?
No.
Okay, all right.
I was about to say, because they didn't ever show up.
I like Philly.
I do, too, right there.
We have another waived rule item for you to consider. That's item number three that Kendall can speak to.
Good morning. This is the final pay application for the rebuilding of the Flatwood Community Center. Final cost of the project is $1,197,546. Requesting rules to, excuse me, requesting to waive rules to get this project finished, everybody paid, and close it out. I would like to say that we were, if you were not in attendance on Thursday, the 5th of September, we reopened Flatwood for the community. Everyone came out. I'd like to thank all the Commissioners that were able to attend. Ken did a great job of planning the event out to where we as staff could just step in, execute. Like to thank James and his crew for being out, and, you know, Flatwood is reopened, and we're looking forward to finishing out some pieces on the outside and, you know, just getting our Flatwood community back thriving within that area. So, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, for those who have not seen this facility, we invite you to come out. It will be available to the public for various activities, so please, if you're interested in utilizing the facility for some good, clean social gatherings, we'll be more than happy to, to speak with you about that. So again, I just want to echo Kendall regarding how grateful we are for everyone who was involved in getting that community center back online. Thank you.
Kendall, I'd like to thank you for your leadership on that project. It was a major project over a long period of time, and I know that it's a team here at the county, and everybody did their part, but thank you for your leadership, keeping that project organized and the trains on time.
I'm as only, I'm only as good as team I work with. Johnny Rains, the architect, is here today, and he was a very crucial per, uh, person, and his company was very crucial in that. So thanks so much to Johnny, and thanks so much to the county staff. Lamar's not in here, but Lamar is our...
Yes, he is. Lamar's back there.
That pink shirt, you can't miss that pink shirt.
But no, having, having good people around me to look at some of these things and tell us exactly the direction we should go and things that we sometimes don't think about is very key. So I'd just like to thank everybody for their help in rebuilding the Flatwood.
And Melissa Peak was very instrumental in terms of the insurance.
Absolutely. Kudos. We got a good team here.
Is there any objection to waiving rules?
No objection.
No objection.
Clay Henley is here to discuss item number four.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Clay Henley, the Chief Appraiser with the Appraisal Department. I have with me Jabara McCall-Martin. She's our Assistant Chief Appraiser. We're here requesting your approval for a professional services addendum to our contract with E-Ring Incorporated. That is the company that provides our computer software for assessment and collection. This is related to House Bill 73, which places a 7% cap on the assessed value of property from year to year. It would be a 7% increase cap. This is for modification to reports and basically to identify any properties that have increased that are subject to the cap. The cost is $140,000. It's a one-time fee, and it is in our budget for next year.
Any questions for Clay?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Clay, thank you for all you do for your office.
Thank you.
Just one question, Clay, real quick.
Yeah.
But is this, is there, is it a large number of properties that would come in over 7%?
In recent years, it has been with the way the economy's been and the housing market, you know, with the increase in prices. This year, we don't know yet because this cap is, is basically, it's from properties last year's value to what we're about to work on for the next tax year. So it is in effect immediately, but we don't know those numbers yet. It will be probably sometime in January or February before we know, but so far, we're not seeing the increases, the projected increases that we have over the last few years. So all that to say, in the last couple of years yet, probably would have come into play a lot. We just don't know yet this year.
So it'll be a pretty, pretty decent hit to the revenue?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, that's what this is, you know, this will provide us reports that will show what it would have been without the cap versus what it is with the cap, so we'll get those reports. But it'll just be a little, a little while before it happens.
All right.
Clay, thank you again. I know the calls you get to your office are not always pleasant, but y'all really do a great job handling it, so thank y'all for doing that.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Pass that along, if you would. Next agenda.
Ann Sykes is here to talk about Bold Goals.
Good morning. And I know for some of us, it's late night and early good morning. Several years ago, but really a couple of years ago, conversation started in this community around a collective action called Bold Goals, which was geared towards bringing the work that is already in place but not coordinated or connected together to make a real difference in partnership with our school system to accomplish third-grade reading proficiency. We hear third grade, third grade, third grade, but bottom line, at third grade, if we can get our students proficient and ready to read proficiently and also ready to read to learn, they're less likely to struggle in middle and high school, they're more likely to graduate, they're more likely to be college and career-ready, and they're less likely to be doing the things that are destructive to themselves and to our community. Let's just be real. The work is not just owned by our school system. Students don't come to kindergarten, and that's when they start learning to read. It starts day one. It starts day one with infants and all the way up through four years old of what services they receive, what accommodations that are available to help them thrive and to support parents. We have a lot of resources in this community already in place. This isn't even about creating new resources. It's about finally tying those resources together. Everything from those nurse-family partnerships in those early stages with new mothers to, as you all know, our first-class pre-K program, and everything in between, whether it be well-baby visits, immunizations on time, screenings that are out there. The difference we could make with tying those resources together is transformative, because let me just give you this important understanding. Only about half of our students are showing up in kindergarten designated as ready to learn, and that's not just an arbitrary designation. There's an actual assessment that every child takes, and being ready to learn is really, really important because when half of the children showing up are not, you're spending additional time and extra cost in bringing those children up to be ready to learn, and many times, that keeps going in the following years. Sometimes it's as simple as if we had known early on that this child had a hearing loss or a reading deficiency. Half the time, it's simply, a child's simply attending pre-K and having the skills built early that they need to be successful. We don't think that there's too much need and too little mon, too little money to be able to waste a single penny. We must align these resources together and support them, amplify them, and get the message out deep into our community across the entire county. That is transformative if we can change that number from 50% to 100% ready to learn. We've spent two years as a community talking about this, assessing, doing resource assessment, looking and understanding what would it take, and looking at other city models around the country, and making sure that we can sustain this work in a way that's meaningful and is not a one-off, and this is a long-term commitment. That's the reason why we didn't jump into it year one, even year two. We need to make sure that we can make this sustainable and that we can make it effective. We know that we can do that now, and we were pleased that we have been able to attract significant support from the State Department of Early Childhood Education. That was a big investment and commitment to Montgomery County. But that's not enough for us to sustain the work to get going and then to move into where we can actually get other grants out of federal and state and also foundation funding ongoing. We have hired, and I would like to introduce Dawn Owens as the Bold Goals Director, which we are glad to have Dawn back in our, back in our work. She's a 30-year veteran of early childhood work and development across not only local but state and national level. We are asking for a $100,000 investment one time as we kick this work out in our entire community. The work is, again, I come back to, and honestly, after last night, now more than ever, we have to step in, we have to make sure we're doing everything we can for success for our children. It's not only owned by MPS, and we spend a lot of time, do better, do better, but we also have to stand up, and the school system is not where these early years get addressed. But if we don't address what's happening in our community from day one, we're not going to see the changes, we're not going to be able to sustain them. We can get changes, we can get improvements, but we have to keep spending a lot of money to get those improvements because we're always having to go back and go back and re, bring children to where they need to be, when they already should be there. And a lot of that's been being done, the advances we've made in the past couple of years, which are good, on money that we all know has gone away. So I come back to, and it's in what we do as Ed Foundation, we've got to build sustainable models, we've got to build accountable models. And let me tell you, the part of this that's really important, too, we're going to know what is happening. We'll be partnering with Parca, Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama, to design a framework that gives transparent reporting to our community, to our school system, and to all of the resources that are out there, whether it be nonprofits, whether it be community-driven. What are we moving? How are we doing? How far do we have to go? What will it take? So that we don't guess. When we need to make investments, we'll have clarity of where are the gaps. When we need to make investments, we know who has under, is under capacity right now. We know exactly what the need is. The whole process is built around knowing rather than guessing. So I ask for your support and investment. This is a co-ass that we've made with the city also, which they have affirmed. We are waiting, really, we're not waiting. I have to tell you, Dawn is already on the ground working every day, and this other piece of this is it is very much community-driven. A lot of this is simply people don't know. I can't tell you how many people we talked to, I didn't know about that have access to free pre-K. When we see seats that are empty, that's not okay because that doesn't match what we know our, our, our population is.
Ann, I'm, I'm, excuse me, I want to make sure my Commissioners have time to ask some questions.
Please, I'll, I'll stop there.
I know there's some questions.
So this is emphasis mainly on pre-K?
Not just pre-K. That's definitely the low-hanging fruit, and we need about 40 more rooms to get to 70% penetration or access for 70% of our four-year-olds. So that's a number we know right now, and that'll be a low-hanging fruit, and we already working on that plan, both what can go into the district and what is providers out in the community that could go ahead and implement and add to those rooms.
So this would affect those kids, a lot of kids coming to first grade not ready?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, that, that's the low-hanging fruit to immediately go to work on. But we also have got the day-one stuff to start with, too.
So they will come to a physical address building for this? This is not, this is going to the homes? How would we, how do we reach these four-year-olds?
So ultimately, we are thinking from day one, because children are born ready to learn, so it's not a physical address. But in our community, we already have the resources to support families, but they're not accessed the way that we see that we need to. So many families are not connected to what's already there, and that has to do with wellness of the mother, prenatal and after birth, and that's where home visiting comes in. We have home visiting models here that exist that work with moms prior to the birth of the baby, making sure that they are getting the babies to the well-child visits, that if there's something wrong, if there are some concerns with the mother, that they have early intervention services, mental health services. So it's thinking of like wraparound services for the beginning, getting our children where they need to be, because really, pre-K is too late. Four years old, we don't want to start there with our intervention. We want to start from day one.
How do y'all identify these families? Is there a way, a database to identify the ones that, uh, that are not getting or coming into kindergarten that's not prepared?
So there's a number of ways. Before they enter school, there is your TANF data and your subsidy data, because we have DHR that provides care for babies, and they use subsidy numbers, and that is based off your level of poverty, so we know that we have families in need and with high need, and that's how you get those original numbers with your babies, and that's how you know when they need maybe some additional supports like home visiting and things like that.
You say this is a one-time ask. How are you going to be able to sustain this program in the future?
So we obviously, and as Ed Foundation, we're 24, we're getting ready to go to our 25th year next year. We have always been successful at, whether it be acquiring foundation grants, looking at local and state-level funding sources, and also, this work really ties into a lot of federal efforts that are going on at a very significant level. Y'all have heard, obviously, the emphasis in, Dr. Biden was here just last week, on pre-K. That's what is the easiest thing to talk about, but it is all wrapped around the understanding that we've got to have early interventions, and the models have been developed, and their research base are rich out there, and there, there's funds available that we know we can go after. And that's a great point. Our whole point was, we couldn't start this without having the initial ground funding so that we can get this up and running, to have the work to then apply for those larger grants, for those sustainable, ongoing pieces. So it really is the seed money.
You said it was a joint ask, so it's combined ask of 100,000 between the city and the county?
150 for the city.
150 for the city, 100 for us.
And 100 from the county. A 60-40.
250,000 total.
Right.
You know, every year, through the class of, I'll go out to Head Start and volunteer to read, and the Reading Across America kind of stuff. And after I read, a lot of those pre, or the kindergarten, the pre-kind, kindergarten kids, they, some of them want to read.
Yeah.
And, and they will sit there and read and do their very best, and, and there's, and brag on them, you know, tell them how great they're reading and, and all, but in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, you know, when my kids were the same age, after we had read to them just about every day from birth, basically, and so it just always broke my heart a little bit to know that these kids really want to learn, they really want to read, and they're so proud when they do it, but they just hadn't had enough training early before they got to Head Start.
Exactly.
To do it. So this is kind of what your program is going to...
Bottom line, that's what we always say, y'all, it's really not about the kids, it really, all about the kids. It's about what the adults do and don't do.
Yeah.
And it really is about making sure the adults take advantage of, and that we, and let me just say this, we can all day long say, well, these programs and people aren't taking advantage of it, shame on them. If that's happening, that's a question back on us as a program to say, why? We have not done our job of digging that message deep enough and where it's seen and understood and owned by the community members. So I use the example that the Bold Goals work is very specific, but it also rides on understanding that the grandmother on the street, the pastor in the pulpit, and the county Commissioners and the county commission are all on the same message, and it's a deep message that everybody's hearing, and it's repeated, and we're using every resource to make sure that, and we're going to have community ambassadors in the community that will be carrying a lot of those messages and helping to educate and bring up the knowledge base on what needs to happen.
When do y'all want, you, you already started the program, so when would you need the funding? Is it like now or as soon as possible?
We need it in the next six, eight months. I mean, I, I'm, we'd like a commitment, the commitment's the most important part, and how and when that funding comes.
Well, we have the information now in front of us.
Yes, right.
They've sent it to us, and we have it in front, so we'll discuss that.
I thank you.
But any other questions?
I was just curious, you said we have the information?
Yeah, they gave us these handouts.
Is that like an overview of the model that you all are using?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Innocent.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look at it. I know there's so many social conditions that goes into whether or not a child is ready to learn upon entering pre-K. You know, you have whether the educational level of the parents, the socioeconomic status, where they live, crime, access to transportation, so many factors that go into that, and I don't know if any one model actually can address all of those factors.
And that is what's unique to this collective action. It literally sits down, takes into account... It literally sits down, takes into account, and brings in the partnerships, and it's a fluid piece of all those issues as we move along, because they have to all be connected and tied together. And if you don't have that kind of connection going in a community, you're not going to get the success.
You know, we have so many different social programs and entities that are carrying out these programs, and it seems that we ought to have a more collaborative effort to really have impact, because everybody's claiming that they're doing something to address the socioeconomic conditions and the readiness of our children, but I'm not seeing the results. And so I'd love to see more of a collaborative effort instead of 10,000 entities trying to do the same thing.
I couldn't, you're speaking our language. We're not talking about developing new entities, we're saying exactly that. We've got lots of resources scattered across, they are not connected, and we don't have the ability to actually measure what the capacities are and what the need is and make sure we're matching those, and that they're tied together, and that their work's being amplified so that it's utilized, and then we have an effective collection and connection of all those pieces. So absolutely.
This, this program is definitely needed. It's heartbreaking, some of the stories that I've heard from elementary school principals, kids showing up not even knowing their real name, they only know their nickname. I mean, and that, that's so, they start out so far behind, and I, I think a big part of the problem, and you, you mentioned it a little, the big part of the problem is, the resources are there, but they're not being exposed to it. It looks like, it seemed to me, I think the governor said something about mandating pre-K, but there should be some kind of way that these parents can, there should, there should be some kind of incentive.
We're not going to be guessing.
To make these parents, you know, and, and education to, to make them aware, you know, of what's available, and it sounds like you're going to be doing a lot of that.
We're not going to be guessing. You know our work is always followed with data. We can't not work with, without having, knowing exactly how much, how well, and what difference we're making, so expect that kind of reporting and information.
Well, Montgomery Education Foundation has a track record of being very successful, you know, I'm truly convinced when a child is born, regardless, they have the same potential as every child has. It's just how they develop from the, from the time they're born until the time they get into some type of formal education. So this kind of fills that gap. So we'll, we'll be glad to talk about and discuss it and get back with...
As we look to recruit a new superintendent, having a city and a community that's connected with this kind of work is transformative for the work that they have to do once they're in the school system. So I thank you all so much.
Thank you for being there last night.
Thank you for being there, and you too, Rhonda.
Next, we can hear from the president of the Montgomery Bicycle Club.
Good morning, Commissioner, I appreciate you having me at your planning meeting today. That's Carol Ann Muston, she's one of our board members. She's handing out a few brochures and also a invoice on one of our upcoming events, which is the reason we're here today. As a Montgomery Bicycle Club, we're a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit organization. We put a lot of time into getting engaged in the community. One of our most successful programs is our community outreach program. I describe it that we're like the Humane Society, but instead of taking in dogs and cats, we take in unwanted bicycles. We have club members that volunteer to repair them and service them, and then we make those available for free adoption. So anyone that needs a bike but can't afford to buy one, we make sure that those are available as well, and that's kind of one of the ways that we get engaged in the community, make sure that people have bikes and have free helmets to ride their bikes safely. One of our annual fundraising events that helps us do all of our community work is the Glasner Autumn Challenge. This is going to be in its 22nd year. It's typically in October, this year it's on October 19th. It starts at Alabama State University, and it's an organized bicycle ride with seven routes, anywhere from a quarter-mile just inside the stadium, riding on the concourse, all the way from a five-mile course through Cloverdale, and going all the way up to 100 miles down into South Montgomery County, hitting communities such as Snowden, Pinlala, Grady, and Raymer. To keep the event safe, we rely heavily on the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office to provide traffic support for the event. Last year, we had 20 deputies supporting the event, working about a 10-hour shift, and all the comments were received last year from the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, and their deputies were that the event was extremely well-run, very safe. The cyclists felt like they had law enforcement present throughout the entire course, and they really felt like they were watched over and protected during the whole day. So one of the things that was passed out, it's a new system that Captain Robert Whitmore at the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office is using for any off-duty hires. It's a company that basically consolidates the request and handles all of the payment to the deputies. And so basically, back in July, I met with Captain Whitmore, and we kind of went through the logistics of the event and analyzed what we were going to need for this year's event, and we came up with about 180 man-hours, representing about 18 deputies for the 10-hour day. And so that is kind of the request that we're looking at to cover the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office and our deputies for the event. So that's kind of the request that we're looking for October event. And then just kind of as a preview for you, the, the second card you have there is for an event we do every five years. It's the Anniversary Salmon of Montgomery Bicycle Ride to Remember the 1965 Voting Rights March. That event in February, we'll bring up about, we're bringing about 900 riders to Montgomery County, and it'll have people from probably 35 states around the whole country. Even in our annual event, the Glasner Autumn Challenge brings in people from about nine to 10 states in the region, and when AUM did a study on our event at the School of Business, they said we have an economic impact of 750,000 up to $1 million. So it does bring in a lot of hotel revenue and tax revenue to the county, in addition to promoting all of the fitness and wellness that we like to do to keep everybody healthy.
I'm going to cut you off for a second. Any commissioners have any questions?
How many participants did you say in the fall event? You said nine or 10 states, but how many people?
We typically bring in about 500 riders to do our event.
And I know I have, especially Delrayda Elementary School has a bike club, thanks to Coach Victor Crowell, and they participate. I've always been a big advocate for this event. It's cool that we have this in Montgomery County. It's a lot of work, but again, people from all over, not just the southeast, but especially this every five years, are going to be coming from all over the country, and I have always been a supporter of you guys. I encourage, Mr. Chairman, I encourage the commission to do this 8,200 request from our designated revenue. Again, this money is for them to hire our own sheriff's deputies to work their event.
I just have a comment that really...
Yes, sir.
That is not directly related. I was doing some research in preparation to do a presentation on prostate cancer, and according to the Prostate Cancer Foundation, a long bike ride can cause a false elevation in your PSA. And I just want to get that out there, just in case some of the riders are going to be going for their screening just right after that.
Yes.
And so it was interesting to note that a, a long bike ride can actually impact the PSA level. So just wanted to say that.
I ain't got to worry about my PSA though, but a long bike ride. Any other questions? Is there any objection to doing this through the joint infrastructure designated revenue as suggested by Commissioner Walker?
I suppose we have the money, right?
We do.
We got a little bit left, not much. Okay, you add that one.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
The next future agenda item is number five, a resolution to amend the Resolution Number 2024-013 regarding the proposed community center in District One. Terry, can I answer any questions you have about it, Commissioner Harris?
So Terry, this, this is, this would be in addition to the 1 million that Commissioner Harris used for his share, plus the 1.105 that we allocated a couple, a few meetings ago. This would be in addition to that?
That's correct.
And where would this funding come from?
Well, the reason that the resolution is written in a way where it says it would be identified by or before December 31st is because we really need to give you a well-thought-out options, and I believe there are a couple of options of where these funds could come from. Essentially, in a previous resolution, you all designated your revenue loss funds from ARPA to current or future budget items. And so what we would like to do is, if the county wants to move forward with this, we'd like to finish our conversations that we've been having with Cheryl, and looking at those funds and giving you some options of where these additional funds may come from. It's just, we are not at a place where we want to say to you definitively that you should spend these funds out of ARPA funds. A, because it will require you to go back and undo a resolution that you've already done. However, we do believe that there are some options that the county could explore, and so we'd like to lay those out to you.
Yeah, I'd like to hear those options. Cheryl, you got those options? You don't have them with you now?
No, not right now.
Yeah. We're, we're planning to get together this week or maybe early next, and so I think it's feasible, Cheryl, if we can connect to have those options in front of you before your next meeting, we just don't have them today.
Yeah, and I would only add that there are two really reasons that the, the amount that initially, that this thing needs to be, the original resolution needs to be amended, or I'm requesting that it be amended. One thing I thought we needed to do was to make this community center more attractive to partnerships, partnerships from the YMCA, partnerships from the city, and otherwise, the, the additional funds were added because I think we need a gym there to carry out a lot of activities that are being done in that community, on, on the, on the streets, and a lot of outside venues. There are no inside venues in that neighborhood. And the other thing is, we, we are at a point where we need to get the bids out to get this whole thing ball-rolling before the deadline is up. And we'll work hard to, to identify the funds, to get this thing completed, but I really, really hope that I can get the commission's support today to move this to the next agenda so that we can move forward toward and not put ourselves in a position of me losing the million I had and, and losing the other million because we didn't get the, get the bids out in time or get the money committed in time. But, but this, this, this really, in order to really have a facility that provides the types of services and what this community needs, I think we really do need this addition.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Harris, if I could put a suggestion out there, what I would propose is that after we have our conversation with Cheryl, we could offer some time for each commissioner individually to kind of give you an overview of where things stand. I think it's time for that anyway. And then you would go into that next meeting with a, with a full understanding of the option that's being presented. And so if, if everyone's okay to that, then we would have our conversation, we could send out an email, open up office hours for anyone that wants to kind of talk through that, and we can do that ahead of your next commission meeting.
Yeah, because my concern is that today, this resolution says the county shall designate, and we don't even know where the funds are coming from to say we're going to designate. Again, I'm a big proponent of community centers, you know, thrilled about Flatwood. But I guess my only concern is, you know, we allocated a million, 1.105 on top of what the original million was, each of us got $1 million to use in our districts. So that would be my concern, I guess, just knowing where this money's going to come from.
We will get those answers to you guys. I will say, one thing that you have going for you, and this is a very good thing, of your revenue loss dollars, most of what you guys individually spent your funds on were ARPA-compliant expenditures, and so that does give the county some flexibility. But again, I would feel better, to your point, Mr. Chairman, if we can very clearly articulate to you what is where and exactly where these funds would come from, whether you would choose to take them from ARPA funds, or whether you would choose to take them from general fund money that may be freed up because you've used ARPA funds on, on your projected budgets.
Yeah, and I want to say too, I know we got renovations to the jail, there's going to be some change orders that we got out there. We got to do something with the probate office on these sides. I want to have a good, clear vision, because I know those things are coming.
Absolutely. Any other questions, anything?
So we're going to move this to the next agenda pending the information you're going to provide, is that fair enough?
Yeah, I'd like to see that happen.
Is that fair enough with everybody else on the commission? To move to the next agenda or...
Pending the information.
Pending the information, or...
And how soon again, Terry, should we be?
I'll get with Ms. Thomas to see if we can meet this week. So I believe if we could do that, we should be at a place where we can have those discussions with you mid to late next week.
Okay, because you know, I did have some concerns about lost revenue. It seems like we've already exhausted that based upon, you know, previous conversations.
No, I think, that's why I think the one-on-one conversation would be really good, to make sure that everyone has the same information and is clear on where we stand on that.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
So Florence, we'll move it to the next agenda pending the information, and if we have enough information, then we can vote.
Item number six is a resolution approving the 2025 Severe Weather Preparedness Tax Holiday February 21 through 23 for 2025. Terry is here if you have any questions. So this can go to the next agenda.
Next agenda, yes, ma'am.
Item number seven is a bid award to Hill's Janitorial Service to provide janitorial services for the restrooms at Elton Dean Park, Montgomery County Activity Center, and the Flatwood Community Center.
I got a question on that one, Mr. Williams. So did we, we put a bid out on this?
We did.
And they were the lowest bidder?
There was five bids on it.
Okay, okay. I'm just wondering, because I know we have Supreme Cleaning, Canandore Janitorial Services, you know, I try to support my minority small businesses, so.
There was only like a 40, $40 a pound difference between the top two, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was 8.88 to 12.80. Yeah, we had five responses to all minorities.
I see the five responses, none of them was yet.
I thought one of them, the one from my government was a six, one was 600 a month and one was 640. Was that, did I?
Can you pull up the bid tabulation?
You're right, you're right, it was 640 for Montgomery.
Oh, 640 for Montgomery.
640.
And the other one next to it was what?
Four.
So it was about a $400 difference.
Oh, 400. Oh, I thought it was closer.
But did we give them special consideration for being from Montgomery? Are we still doing that?
They're from Alabama. I think it's state.
These type of service, janitorial service, are they considered to be professional services?
No, no, sir.
They're not.
You don't consider professional services?
Well, I think he's talking about...
Outside to be a process. You're talking about outside, you're...
Yeah, I was, yes, yes. They can be professional services. Attorney shaking his head to the, in the negative.
Professional services, that's going to be your legal, architectural, engineering-type services. I don't think it would apply for janitorial.
So with this being a bid, is there any provisions for being local?
There's a 10%, was it 10%?
5%.
Yeah, and that's way past 5%.
So, okay.
So that'd be next agenda.
Item number eight is a bid award to Outdoor Obsessions for Landscaping Services at the Industrial Park.
Any questions on that? James, is this the same company that's been doing it? Might want to remind them to get that weed eater out, out there around the pond banks, it's getting a little high, so. That'd be next agenda. That'd be next agenda.
At the last meeting, we discussed the board member reappointments to the Joint Public Charity Hospital, and both board members whose terms are expiring would like to be reappointed.
So let me ask a question about that. So we just, we, do we ever go and, and make sure that the people that we appoint to the board are doing a good job, that they're carrying out their duties? Do we sit down and have conversations without just appointing them to the board?
I, I communicate with Robert Stein Dorff. He's the one that I know. So I do communicate with him.
Yeah, the ones that I've directly appointed, I do.
You do, you do, okay.
Yeah, but I can't, I can't say for the other ones.
Okay, okay. All right. I just wanted to...
All right.
So that'd be next agenda.
The onus is on us to do that.
If the onus is on us, the person, okay, so I got you.
Is that all, Florence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have no excuse. We've got seven minutes today. I'm giving you seven. We never give you that much. So ten o'clock, we're going to start the formal session.
Mr. Jim, we have a presentation. Mr. Nathaniel is in the audience.
You want to do it now?
So I don't know. I didn't want to hold them up, because they've been waiting very patiently. But no, I hear that some, some chatter from my fellow commissioner, they need their seven minutes, so.
No, 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 we can help, we can help.
No, no, let's, can you, can you wait until ten o'clock, Mr. Williams?
Seven minutes. You'll be first.
Yes, a thumbs up. Thank you.
Okay, okay.